Okay, good evening to you all. I'm Mayor Ken Marshburn and I call the March 1, 2021 meeting of the Garner Town Council to order and extend a welcome to all of our council members and those of you who may be watching the media platform of some type. We welcome you all. We're still meeting virtually and we'll go over some of the virtual rules that we require to go by. But to start our meeting this evening, I'm going to have our town clerk, if she will, to call the roll.
Mayor Marshburn?
I'm present.
Mayor Pro Tim Behringer?
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Vance?
Here.
And Councilmember Singleton?
Here, ma'am.
Yeah, to the council and to the town clerk, Mr. Singleton did send us a message indicating because of a work obligation, he would not be here at the beginning of the meeting, but he will be hopefully within the next 30 minutes or so, present and available to us, so we will acknowledge his presence as soon as he gets here. So be aware of that, if you will. Okay, at this time on our agenda is our standard time of our pledge to allegiance and the invocation, and tonight, Councilmember Phil Matthews will lead us in those two entities.
Let's pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Let's pray. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we come to you tonight in these trying times, thanking you for your mercy, your grace. Lord, we ask that you grant us wisdom and discernment as we deliberate issues that concern our town and our future, and grant us wisdom to make good decisions. We pray for our country, we pray for our military, and just thank you for your many blessings, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Singleton. Excuse me, Mr. Matthews, I'm sorry, and Mr. Singleton on the mind, I believe. So thank you very much. Let me read the following as it relates to the next item of our agenda, and that is petitions and comments. This is the portion of the meeting to receive comments from the public on items not included on this agenda. Since the council is meeting virtually, interested parties can choose to appear live on the virtual meeting platform, or provided written comments will be shared with the council. The council is interested in hearing your concerns, but may not take action or deliberate on subject matters brought up during the petitions comments segment. Topics requiring further investigation be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for future agenda. And council members, I can inform you that we did receive one written comment from a Mr. Perry Whitlock that was, I believe, forwarded to each of you, so you have that available to you. There were no other comments that I'm aware of, is that correct, Ms. Gibson?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item of business is the adoption of the agenda. Council, you have that before you, so I will entertain a motion at this time.
I move.
Second.
Okay. Motion properly made and seconded, and as I will note, we will do roll call votes this evening. So, Madam Town Clerk, if you will call the roll for the approval of the agenda, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Behringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
And Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Okay, thank you all. The motion obviously passed us, so thank you so much for the adoption of the agenda. For purposes of all of us, and as a reminder, and also for the public who may be watching, I need to give you the following information. The meeting this evening is being conducted as a remote meeting pursuant to North Carolina Sessions Law 2020-3. Whenever a council member cannot be seen on the screen, that member will identify him or herself by name prior to asking questions, participating in deliberations, making motions, proposing amendments, and voting. And I'll give a little further information just as we start into our public hearings in just a moment. But for now, I don't believe there are any presentations, none that I'm aware of. Is that consistent with your understanding, Ms. Gibson?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to item G on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. There's only one item on that, you've all had a chance to look at that, so I'll entertain a motion that you approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Seconded. Seconded by Mr. Matthews. Properly made, motion made and seconded. Again, Ms. Clerk, if you will call the roll for approval.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
And Mayor Pro Tim Behringer?
Aye.
Okay, thank you so much, and the motion is approved and the consent agenda is approved, so thank you for that. We will now go to items under public hearings. And so, as we go into this, I need to mention that all public hearings on the agenda, written comments may be submitted up to 24 hours after the public hearing, and those can be submitted via email to sgibson@garnernc.gov, that's our town clerk. So, for our public hearings this evening, we have four of those, and I'm going to move right to the very first one and recognize Mr. David Banford, who is with our Planning Services Department. So, Mr. Banford, if you're there, I will recognize you at this time, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. We have three public hearings tonight for annexations. The first one is case number ANX21-21. This is for Ridgemore South. This vicinity map shows the location of the annexation site outlined in black. Also included is about .704 acres of right-of-way within the Hebron Church Road right-of-way. The reason for this, staff added this in, was to make the town property to the east, the Meadowbrook site, part of the contiguous corporate limits. Ridgemore South came in last year as a conditional use zoning and a conditional use subdivision request for 70 townhome units, and this was approved on October 20 of 2020. They are moving forward with construction and will submit plaits for review to record lots, and the annexation petition is a requirement for that. Total acreage is 14.85 acres for the annexation. I'll be happy to answer any questions on this case.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Banford. Council, your opportunity, if you have questions of Mr. Banford. I'll start with Mr. Vance, any questions, sir?
No questions.
Mr. Dellinger?
No questions.
Ms. Behringer?
No questions.
And Mr. Matthews? Mr. Matthews, I believe you need to unmute, sir.
Sorry about that, no questions, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. And Mr. Singleton is not with us, so, okay, no other information to share on this, Mr. Banford, is that right? You ready for us to vote?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you've heard the presentation, and so we're asked to consider adoption, I believe the annexation ordinance number is 2021-5019. Please entertain a motion from council on that matter now.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt annexation ordinance 2021-5019.
Seconded. Okay, thank you. Motion properly made and seconded by Mr. Vance. And Mr. Matthews, any other questions or comments before we vote, council? Hearing done. Ms. Gibson, if you will call the roll on this vote?
Sure. Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Behringer?
Aye.
And Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All ayes voted on this particular vote, so I declare that you have adopted and approved the ordinance previously mentioned, 2021-5019. Okay, Mr. Banford, you're with us on several more of these, so I recognize you for item number two.
Okay, Mayor, this is annexation case 21-02, and the last case will be ANX21-03. And these next two annexations are for the Rand Village Commercial Site, which was approved on the west side of Highway 401 north of 1010 Road. And the reason we have two separate cases is because the lots are owned by two separate LLC entities, so we had to break that up into two separate cases. This first case is owned by Cambridge Garner LLC. The annexation boundary is outlined in black here. Again, this is on the west side of Fayetteville Road. I guess the northwest quadrant of Highway 401 and 1010 Road. Also included is approximately .36 acres of right-of-way within Fayetteville Road. The area on this map in yellow are areas that are currently annexed into the corporate limits. This is the McCullers Shopping Center and the McCullers Walk Development. On the west side, we have Sheets, we also have Walgreens, another retail store. Total annexed acreage is 24.67 acres. This was part of the Rand Village Commercial Subdivision, which was approved on July 21, 2020. This came in as conditional use zoning case 19-11 and conditional use subdivision case I'll be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Banford. I believe rather than necessarily calling each name, I would just ask if there's a council member at this time who desires to either ask a question or like to comment. If so, go ahead and do that at this time.
I just have an informational question on how, you know, it's really just from my own personal information, how this, is it part of the town limits with both sides of the road being in the town limits on already developed property? I'm just curious how that, how that happens. It's interesting to me.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that question? I had a hard time hearing.
Sorry. How it, how it happens that that's not part of the town limits when both sides of the road are in the town limits because of subsequent, previous development?
Correct. So, the answer is when you have corporate limits on, on both sides of a public right-of-way, then the right-of-way is annexed. We do, we will have a gap here that's, that we identified, outlined in pink or red, and so we want to close that gap, and as the properties continue to annex to the north towards Caddy Road, we will make sure that those rights, right-of-ways get, get annexed as well. That is important for emergency services. If there's a police call and there's an accident or a service call in that area of the road, then if it's annexed, it would be town of Garner Police Department. If it's not annexed, it would be the Wake County Sheriff's Department or the Highway Patrol.
Right, thank you.
Sure.
Interesting.
Okay, other questions from council, anybody? Okay, hearing done. Anything else you need to present on this, David? You said you had completed, I guess, so.
Yes, I am finished, sir, thank you.
Okay, we're ready for a vote. I'll entertain a motion from council on this issue.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Annexation 21-02, Cambridge Garner.
Okay. Is it seconded?
Seconded.
Was that Behringer?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Motion properly made and seconded. I'll ask the town clerk to call the roll if you favor the motion.
Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Behringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
And Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Motion passes, and we'll move David to the next item.
The next annexation case is ANX2103, and the owner of this tract is Cambridge Garner 2 LLC. Is my information on the screen? I had to flip through just a minute ago.
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. This tract is outlined in black, so this is an out parcel of the larger tract from the previous case. Also included with this annexation is approximately 1.6 acres of right-of-way within Highway And this was also part of the previous, previously approved Rand Village subdivision and conditional use rezoning. Total annexed acreage is approximately four acres, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. Again, this is the same project from the last annexation case, it's just broken up into two separate LLCs.
Okay, again, thank you, Mr. Banford, and council will use the same method. If you have a question or comment, just let it be known and we'll recognize you.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, in case the public's watching, this smaller tract in the end will be a part of that entirely large tract, and it'll all be as one, just, just two different owners, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews, anybody else? Okay, hearing done. I will entertain a motion on this item, number three on our agenda, Annexation 2103.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt annexation ordinance 2021-50021.
Okay, is it your second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Motion properly made and seconded. Any other questions or comment before we vote? Hearing done, I will ask the town clerk to call the roll on this vote, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Behringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
And Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Okay, again, thank you very much. Motion is approved by unanimous vote, or by the unanimous vote of the people we have present. So, thank you. Mr. Banford, I believe that takes care of your items, am I correct, or do you have anything else?
That takes care of my items, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, I'll go to item four on the agenda, or item four under the public hearings, anyway, and I will recognize our planning director, Mr. Jeff Trezenberg, who's going to talk to us about NCGS Chapter 160D and the implementation of that. We've had some conversations about that in the past, Mr. Trezenberg, and we'll look forward to your presentation this evening, sir.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. As we look forward to possible adoption of our 160D text amendment package at our next meeting, we want to be sure that we have all of the different pieces ready to go. So, accompanying the restructuring of our processes, we also needed to reflect that in our existing fee schedule. So what you see on your screen here is Section 2, which is where all of the planning-related fees occur, and so the changes that are proposed here are just in the opening section of, of the community services charges under development review fees. We are not proposing any major changes to the amounts at this time. We'll certainly be reviewing them come budget time with, with the budget adoption process, but for right now, just making sure that we can carry projects forward, not having any change in cost to the applicants for those who are kind of midstream in their process right now. And we are moving to more of a à la carte selection process, so whereas before you saw site plans of all different kinds, it led to a lot of, a lot of nuances to the applications, and so now we will just have a site plan application, and if it needs to have a special use permit with it, as you can see, we've added a special use permit line item and aligned that cost for special use permits. Since it is a quasi-judicial hearing, we've aligned it with the costs that you'll see further down. Here for board of adjustment applications is also $400. So we just figured that it was appropriate, if that was the cost to do the advertising and hold a quasi-judicial hearing in front of the board of adjustment, that we would carry that over to a special use permit as well in front of the council. So, other than that, it really is just combining the major subdivisions into a single line, site plans into a single line, except for modifications, which generally are very, very minor and don't require near as much review, and then keeping our plan, development master plan as well. That, that is one item that will be revamped one more time when we eventually adopt a new UDO, but for right now, those planned development districts are still going to be in the ordinance, so aligning that $750 fee with a site plan fee, because they're basically the same thing. Again, tonight, we're just having the public hearing to receive any comments, if there were any. We haven't had any come in, so if you all have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Otherwise, we'd appreciate you just closing the public hearing, but deferring action until the 16th, when we can do it all at once.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. I should have noted the opening of the public hearing, probably of the others as well, but I will hold counsel on, on your presentation, and I believe you said you're not aware of any other persons at this point who plan to speak or wish to speak on this matter, is that right?
No, we have not heard from anyone.
Okay. Well, I'll go to, to Mr. Vance, if you have questions or comments, sir?
No questions at this time about this.
Okay. Mr. Dellinger?
No specific questions about these. Kind of curious going forward, maybe when we adopt these later, kind of getting a feel for how we fall relative to other municipalities in Wake County would be interesting, just to see. That's all.
Thank you. Ms. Behringer?
No questions.
And Mr. Matthews?
No questions, sir.
Okay, so I believe we are looking to defer action on this matter at the conclusion of this hearing, and take this back up on March 16, is that correct, Mr. Trezenberg?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else you care to add?
No, not at this time.
Okay, so I guess I should confer with Ms. Jones to say, is it, is it proper for me at this time to, to close this hearing or just continue it until the 16th?
You can do either one. If you keep it open, you would have a public hearing again on the 16th.
Okay, so if we're ready to close it, then we will open it on the 16th, as a new matter, right? Okay. I'll declare that, that the public hearing is, is over at this time, and will be deferred to further decision on this at our March 16 council meeting, right? Okay, we'll move now to new and old business items. First item is page 44 on your agenda, council, and I will recognize again, Mr. Trezenberg, our planning director, for that item.
Yes. Again, this is an item that has been to you once before for the public hearing late last year. It's been to Planning Commission and been on their agenda for a couple of, couple of months to give them time to look through things. Ms. Jones, the town attorney, has been, been looking through things as well. So we're at a point where we're bringing it back for the decision with a recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission. I don't have a formal presentation to you tonight, because we have been over it several times, but I do have those materials available if needed for reference. We did include a memo of changes that we've been tracking, however minor they, they are, since this was introduced to you last year, and so those presented as well, and they're reflected in the draft articles that were in your packets. And so, again, tonight, I didn't want to just, knowing that we're not, still not going to be entertaining the decision until the 16th, I did want to at least leave this on the agenda for tonight, see if you all had any additional questions that we can either try to answer tonight, or at least get you the answer prior to the 16th. I do know that Ms. Jones is taking another look through it one more time to make sure that we've got all of the general statute references and other kind of technicalities in there correctly, and so there may be a couple of other just very minor reference adjustments between now and then, but otherwise, I think we're in, we feel like we're in pretty good shape for adopting it on the 16th. But again, be glad to answer any questions if you have them now, or, or take them for, for the 16th.
Okay, Jeff, yes, thank you very much. So, council, we will defer action of this to the 16th, but now's a good time, if you have questions, comments, or otherwise, to ask Mr. Trezenberg. I'll recognize council members, I'll start with Mr. Matthews.
Not at this time, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Behringer?
No questions.
Mr. Dellinger?
Yeah, I just wanted to, so the, what's in our packet tonight will be what comes before us as is on the 16th, is that correct?
Correct.
And some of these are completely rewritten, and some of these are just modified for 160D, correct, presently?
Yes.
And then the ones who, that haven't been rewritten will come back, but some of these will come back again, depending on certain changes that are made to the ones that aren't done yet. So like, Section 1 will come back when the zoning stuff changes a little bit. That's a lot. There's a lot of work that's gone into this. So I just wanted to be sure that what we have is, is what we can read through and, and know that it's not going to significantly change, and the ones that are still old, we know that there are 160D changes in there that are specific only to 160D, but that they will be coming back to us again in a more fleshed-out form.
Right. So I, I would just note for, again, even for members of the public who might be looking at them, if you see the new format with the little Garner Forward emblem in the top of that particular article, that is an article that we anticipated would just mostly be affected by 160D and not so much the rewrite. So we went ahead and updated those to our, our new format. It's possible that we will still have changes as part of the rewrite project to those chapters, but we anticipate most of the heavy lifting having been done for those. And then anything that you see still in just the, the old American legal, very structure codified. And then anything that you see still in just the old American legal, very structure codified setup is still stuff that remains to be worked on as part of the rewrite. We have addressed any of the 160D compatibility needs, but those are very, very small and few and far between compared to the rewrite that's still coming.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, and Mr. Vance, I give you an opportunity to have questions come in, sir.
No, sir, I have no comments at this time.
Okay. All right. I have not been notified of any member of the public who makes, desires to make comment. Are you familiar with any one, Mr. Trezenberg?
I am not, no, sir.
So I'm going to declare that we have conducted this public meeting and this matter will be continued to our regular meeting on March 16 for what I guess would be final action. So, okay, so hearing is closed and we will take that back up at our March 16 meeting. Okay, moving right along, council, the next item on our agenda is the item of committee reports. Are there any? Okay, hearing none. We will move on that. I would just say, the committee that was working to finalize an action to rename our council chambers for our late mayor, Ronnie Williams, there's some work still going on there and we're not ready to bring yet final information back on some of the logistics of this, but we're getting closer. So we'll give you some updates on that in the fairly near future, I believe, safe to say. So at this time, I will recognize our manager for item K, manager reports, Mr. Dickerson.
All right, Mr. Mayor, town council, you have in your agenda packet the Garner info, working on those items. It looks fairly small list right now. Sorry, I'm looking to the side. I forgot my agenda packet, so I'm looking at my computer. But also, we wanted just to remind you of the bond session, which is on March the 11th from 8:30 to 12:30. More than likely, we're going to have that session in the council chambers. We will have it available on Teams, but you know, everyone's welcome to come in for that session. We do anticipate having our financial advisors in person or on Teams. I don't know if that's been determined yet, but I know if we need them to be here, they will be. Any questions about that? That session?
Okay, I would just emphasize to council, well, go ahead. I was just going to emphasize that's a very important meeting to attend. Go ahead. Yes, Mr. Dellinger?
Yeah. Do we have any further guidance on any changes to the timeline for the bond, given that it's looking like there's a strong possibility that those elections, the referendum, might be pushed into 2022?
Right, I was going to talk about that. So while we're talking about the bond, I might as well talk about it now. So the Board of Elections, State Board of Elections, is making a recommendation that elections be moved to 2022, six months later than what they normally would be, so probably into May, based on the fact that the census data has not been put out yet. And for those local governments that have districts, they will not be able to form their districts for the voting. Now, that doesn't affect us per se because we do not vote by district. However, I think the push is for all local governments to have voting at the same time. So we were actually talking about this today with our town lobbyists, the mayor and I. It's probably not a huge deal if we had to move six months out. I'm not saying that's what we prefer. We still need to do a little bit of analysis because I need to know whether keeping it and doing it on our own is going to cost us significantly more. Because typically when there's elections in this county, probably every county, the municipalities divide up the cost. So if there's fewer municipalities having elections like in November, and if we decide to have ours in November, if it's a choice, it might cost us more because the cost is not being split as much. However, because we don't typically have our polls open as long as like, say, Raleigh or Cary, we might be able to have less days like we used to. So it's a little complicated. But so it's, pretty soon, I guess we need to decide whether we're okay moving it or if we want to make some kind of push through the legislature to keep it in November. And I'm sure we're not going to be the only local government that may want to do that.
A comment? Go ahead, Ms. Matthews.
Thanks, sir. I understand, but you know, with everything that's going on nationally as well as state, interest rates being what they are now, six months from now, who knows where that could be? And the cost could be quite significant to the taxpayers and people supporting this bond. I'm very concerned about pushing it out six months. I think we really need to look at the cost on us having our local elections. I agree with you, Mr. Dixon, we probably could condense those early voting down, those days somewhat shorter because it's just strictly us if that be the case, and trim those costs down. But the overall, what it could cost us, and I think everybody is nodding their heads in agreement on this thing, that we don't really need to push this thing six months down the road because, you know, with a lot of certainty, it's one thing, but there's so much uncertainty going on right now, these interest rates and the cost of doing business. Just speaking for me here, I'm going to suggest we keep it in November of this year and move forward with it. It's just my thoughts, sir. Thank you.
I would, I can concur with the concerns. It might be helpful to get Davenport to run some numbers on what a significant interest rate difference would be to cost them. We're talking about a very large bond amount, and over time, that could be hundreds of thousands of dollars of difference in taxpayer money. So I think we should, leave it some firm numbers as to what we potentially could be looking at if we had to wait six additional months.
Yeah. And I'll worry with that as well. I'd much rather just continue on with our regular voting season instead of making that adjustment with what we were trying to do relative to the bond. There's just a level of uncertainty there. It's, I believe, imperative that we just hold line with the November vote.
Yeah. Mr. Manager, do I understand the conversation we had today with Mr. Bridges? Is this possibly something that the legislature will mandate or at least at the time for the regular municipal election? Is that your understanding, sir?
Yes, right now, it's a recommendation from the State Board of Elections, but I think it will take action of the state legislature to move the elections, the referendums as well as the general elections. One reason why this is fairly urgent right now is because I think bill filing deadlines are coming up. I'm not sure we're going to try to do this as a local bill. I think we would probably just kind of tag on with some other local governments that are probably going to want to do the same thing. But I will talk to Mr. Bridges tomorrow and see what we can get, you know, to our local delegation. Also, Ms. Gibson, town clerk, is looking into what the cost difference would be if there were fewer municipalities having an election in November versus if we had to move to May. And we may not have a choice, but we just want to look at the options and tell them what our preferred choice is.
The only point I was making is I'm not sure if it'd be mandated by the legislature, but hopefully, you know, we could certainly have to tack on a local bill that would allow us to proceed at our regular time, right?
It could be a local bill or it could just be going in with a group of other municipalities. I'm not sure if that's called a local bill, but it could be, could be a local with multiple entities attached. I'll put it that way.
Have you had any feedback from other municipalities as who else besides us would be interested in keeping this in November of this year?
I have not. There's probably one or two that I would call because we had some concerns about the elections last time, so I can try to find out.
I would recommend reaching out to the League of Municipalities too because this bond issue specifically is probably the one that's not unique to us. But it's impactful for all of us, so that financial part of it is really significant to a lot of smaller municipalities.
Right, and the League's going to have folks on both sides of it, so they should be fine advocating for us on this to help us out because it will not hurt the others, I don't believe. So it's...
I think so. I think probably some of you may know about, more about than I do, but this is driven apparently by the delay in the census information. And obviously, towns that vote by districts, the issue of having those districts drawn correctly consistent with the information compiled in the latest census is the issue that's causing the problem at this point. So obviously, a lot of towns like ours, we don't vote by district, so that's not an issue for us in terms of the census data, I suppose. Okay, anybody else have a comment or question for the town manager on that issue? Okay, we'll keep you apprised as we talk with Mr. Bridges and as he keeps us informed on some of the bill filing deadlines and those kinds of things, and we expect to have further conversations with him. Okay?
Also, just as a matter of information, we, the mayor and I spoke to Mr. Bridges about a potential legislative agenda for the town. Besides what we just spoke about, we don't really have any other local bills that we can think of, but we may, we may want to advocate for some things that the League is doing, some of the things in the governor's budget. There's also some local government issues that we might want to kind of tag on to. So we'll probably have some type of legislative agenda coming to you pretty soon. Get your feedback.
Yeah, we've looked at several items. Some of those were advocacy goals that were sort of universal that the League adopted, but we will look at those and bring those back to council with some that we would recommend that you consider.
All right. Next thing, I just want to keep touting the G-PAC at home series. The next show is March the 4th, which is Thursday, and we will have Gina Chavez. So that will be the next one. That is Thursday, right? Yes. All right. This past weekend, the Showcase of Talent aired. I erroneously put Saturday, March 27, but it was actually February 27. However, the good thing is you can go back and watch it. It's streaming on our Facebook channel. So any of the previous G-PAC from home series, you can go back and watch, and then also the Showcase of Talent, you could watch. Let's see. And also, let me see if I had anything else here. That's it. I do, we do have closed session, Mayor, and I probably should have told you this early on, but I will need to add a closed session. In addition to the personnel one, I will need to add one for real estate acquisition.
Okay, yeah, you had mentioned that to me. I just didn't necessarily have the site, but we can get that, I'm sure, from Ms. Jones. So, okay, in fact, before we... Go ahead.
That concludes my reports.
Ms. Jones, our attorney, do you have any information report to share with us?
I do not have a report tonight, but that site for the closed session for real estate acquisition is General Statutes 143-318.11, subsection A4.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. All right, council, Mr. Singleton may be amazed that we've finished. I'm supposing I haven't yet heard from him, so I don't believe he's with us yet, but council reports, I will... Yeah, there he is, hi.
Still muted.
You're just in time for council reports, sir.
Ears are burdened.
So I'll give you a few minutes to collect yourself there, and I'll begin tonight with Mr. Vance. He has a council report.
I don't have a council report tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Ms. Behringer?
Yes, sir, I have a few things I wanted to bring up. One is the question, was our town council planning retreat recorded for citizens to be able to watch or not? I've had a request from someone who wanted to see it.
It was streamed on Facebook Live, but I don't believe it was recorded. Mr. Mercer may be able to answer that question more precisely, but I don't think it was recorded.
Okay, all right. Let's take care of that one. Let's see. I noticed in the Triangle Business Journal, February 12 issue, there was an article about some LEED certified buildings in the Triangle, and I was just a question, I know that the shelter park for the building there was LEED certified. Hate to admit, but I've forgotten what level we were LEED certified at. Do you remember?
Which building was that again, sir?
The White Deer Park, the nature center.
I think it was Silver.
Okay.
I think it was Silver.
And what year was that?
2009.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Mr. Singleton would know that one. Okay. And then the third thing is going back to the issue of all the trash all over town and not just in Garner. I left a message for Joey Hopkins, District 5 engineer, asking him to have someone come and take a look at it and help us with it. Road down Creech Road into Raleigh, and it's just absolutely horrible once we get past the bridge all the way up to one of the churches on Sanderford Road. It's just ridiculous. So what other options do we have other than on state maintained roads, just continually calling Mr. Hopkins and asking for help?
We could do it ourselves, but we'd be setting a precedent to take care of state roads, and I know we do in some areas, but at some point, it's a lot of hours.
At our planning retreat, Mr. Singleton brought up the possibility of just hiring somebody whose job it was to take care of picking things up and beautification and so forth. And it is, I would invite any of you to please go down Creech Road and see it. It looks like the city dump down there. It's just, it looks like people have just opened their car windows and thrown bags out, opened bags, and it goes on for a good mile. And so part of that's in our jurisdiction, part of it's in Raleigh, and that's just one location. I know that, again, we talked about at the planning retreat what we might do, so I would like to know what our plans are in that regard.
I will make a quick comment during our discussion with Mr. Bridges today. I'm not sure how much help this will be, but there is a, I think, shall I refer to it as a potential bill that the legislature is looking to take up, trying to address this. Of course, that'd be on a statewide basis, but that's the first time, I believe, I've heard the legislature sort of weigh in in a specific way. I don't think bills have been introduced just yet, but that is something, did I understand that correctly, Mr. Manager?
That is correct, and Mr. Royalance and I both have talked preliminarily with Mr. Jones, and he's putting something together for us, and we're going to meet and talk about options. Hopefully, once grass season comes back, and I know the state doesn't cut grass as often as we do, but as far as our sections where we maintain the rightaways and cut grass, we'll have our mowing crews out more often, and they are required to pick up litter prior to mowing.
Well, this is, this is just a condition that has gotten ridiculously out of hand, and it's fast approaching, if it hasn't already, the point where we can't say, well, that's not our road. We've got to do something. Did other council members get, receive the email from Mr. Holton about his suggestion, Tim Holton's suggestions and ideas about how to get citizens involved in helping take care of these roads? Was that just that?
I have not received anything recently. There was something that he sent, it's been at least a few months ago. Is that what you're referring to, Ms. Behringer?
It is, and I'll forward it to the manager and to other council members to have a look at it and see how, some of his ideas really, it would take a little work, but it did seem reasonable. And so I'll forward that so that all of us can look at it. And... and make some kind of commitment, because it's just, it's disgusting, it's just absolutely disgusting.
How many of these are adopt-to-highway type roads? You see these signs out there, and I was going down Old Stage of Van Dore, I couldn't believe you couldn't see the road for the litter, but so many times you see these adopt-to-highway signs, how long did, how often do they clean, pick up and clean these roads? Are they getting behind the eight ball, or what's the story there?
I believe according to the regulations, they're required to clean them twice a year. And the problem with a lot of them is as soon as they get, if they get picked up, as soon as they get picked up, it gets right back the way it was. And some of these roadways are dangerous for just regular pedestrians to be walking down the road, picking up litter, so it might be some that don't even get picked up because of the hazard level.
Well, right, but most of the roads around Garner are, there can be times chosen to clean them up that would reduce the hazard problem. Problem, we've just, we've got to be proactive about it.
I'll just one comment about Mr. Hol, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I was just gonna say, I would observe that, you know, I don't have a magic wand here, but there has to be, in my view, a sort of a multi-pronged approach to this thing, obviously, you can concentrate on getting people out or even our people to pick up trash on the road, and some of you, like me, have participated in those I have in clean sweeps. Like, my wife and I both have participated, and it's amazing to me how you can pick up backfuls of trash one day, and within two days, you can go to the same road that you were just on, and the problem is there, so I don't know how much public education, I'll use that term loosely, is, I think it's a crucial part of this, but I think unless we try to do more than, you know, just picking up the litter, and that's almost an impossibility, it seems like now, and I've driven, and I know Mr. Singleton travels around a lot of areas in North Carolina, particularly eastern North Carolina, but, you know, it is a problem all around, so. Again, I'm not accusing what we have here, but we have our town to take care of, and obviously, there are several roads through our town that are NC DOT roads, so we would expect them to do what they can for that, but again, I'm open to ideas, I'm happy to sit down and talk with people like Mr. Holton, I have a neighbor who tries to pick up trash when she goes walking. Open to ideas, COVID-19, I think, obviously, has, we tend to blame, I guess, a lot of things on that, but I do think that has hindered some of the organized efforts, at least that I've been aware of in the past, so there's.
Well, I think, I can appreciate your point of view, Mr. Mayor, and I agree with it, but I think we have to shift our thinking away from having the assumption that if we clean it up, it'll be okay for a while, you know, we have to mow the grass over and over and over again, we know that's not going to stay mowed forever. And doing litter cleanup is not gonna, it's not gonna be one and done ever, no matter where we are.
Right, so I think, like I said, it has to be public, maybe it has to be enforcement, I mean, I think the proposed bill I saw maybe tries to put some enforcement teeth into that, and actually identify people and have some sanctions, some fine or something, so. If all of those things could come together, perhaps we could get a better handle on this, but I'm certainly willing to participate in further discussions and/or further recommendations on it, it's a problem that's not going away, as we all know.
It's not.
Yeah.
And, Mr. Mayor, just one quick comment, you know, Mr. Holden, Mr. Holton is not one just to talk about this, if you drive around through North Garner, there are multiple times I've seen him out there on his own picking up trash. So he's just not complaining, he's been out there trying to do it himself, so. Kudos, and actually, not just, not just him, I've driven different times in the past, over the past several couple of months, and I saw one guy maybe a week ago on Timber Drive, on his own, just picking up trash, and I know over on Sycamore, I've seen it too, so there are citizens out there trying, so if we can help them, that would be great.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Can I, while Ms. Behringer still has the floor, can I correct a couple of things? So I did find out that we do have the recording of the retreat.
Oh, wonderful, okay, and where, I have a citizen who asked for it, so where does he locate that?
Well, it's not, I don't think the link is up, so we'll have to talk about how we get that back out.
Okay.
I'll talk to Mr. Mercer about that.
Okay, wonderful, thanks.
And our LEED nature center was gold, so I got corrected on that by Candy.
Very good, very good, thank you. Well, when I saw the article in the Triangle Business Journal, it just reminded me of how much work went into making that a LEED-certified building. I think it's worthwhile bringing that back into the public view every now and then.
Okay, let's see, okay, all right, let me see, Mr. Singleton, I recognize you, sir, for any council report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Yeah, well, I remember after all the hoops we had to jump through with the nature center, and that's when we decided to back off LEED-certifying everything, when we found out the extra cost, and we asked the question of, they said, well, if you do LEED-certified, you'll get the most efficient heat and air unit there is at the time, I'm like, why can't we get the most efficient heat and air unit at the time anyway? That was some of the dumbest stuff I've ever heard of, and then, but Mr. Candy and I, we got the information and read it, and that's why we dropped it, because you pay a lot of money just to say it's LEED-certified when you can do the same thing. Anyway, regarding the trash, this is not just a Garner problem, it's all over, it's a societal problem, this is not just Garner. I will say today, and I mentioned this to Mr. Dickerson, when I was going from Wendell Falls Parkway to where Pool Road comes on, crossing over Eagle Rock, outside the Wendell city limits, Wendell Public Works people were cleaning up the road today, not in their city limits. Now, it is the entrance to their town, there's only so many ways into Wendell, but where they're working is they had their shirts and hats on, Wendell on its side, you know, it wasn't like I was making this up, and working hard trying to get it cleaned. So it is a, it's an issue, there was some, on 264 a couple of weeks ago, when you're going around Greenville after exit 73, it looked like somebody had taken a trash truck and opened the back end of it, I kid you not. On one side, it was absolutely horrible, I had to assume that's what happened, but there was trash everywhere. And it's just, it's, I don't know what people are thinking, you talked about Creech Road, and Mr. Holton has mentioned that, and also, he's mentioned Weston Road, where Weston turns into Meadow Brook, where people go down there, not only dump trash, they dump furniture, trash cans, and end tables, and lamps, and other stuff. So that is an issue, it's, you know, how do you attack it, and I think some people who work on some of these sweeps get frustrated because they go there, as the mayor mentioned, you sweep, and a week later, it looks as bad as it did before, you go there and you bust your butt and work out there several hours, so. It's a societal problem, I don't know what's gonna cure it, we've been talking about picking up litter since I was a little boy, and unfortunately, it's just not gotten any better, and again, you can Google wral.com, witn.com, newsandobserver.com, numerous actions are taking, being taken by some legislatures because this is a statewide issue, so it's unfortunate. And I don't know what's gonna solve the problem, finding them, maybe that'll help, but God, there's so many people littering, you know, I don't think we want to have the police out there riding them down on motorcycles chasing people when they see trash they're not. But anyway, it's, it's a problem, it's not gonna go away, I'm afraid, even as you do try to clean up, so. Anyway, I'm sorry for being tardy, just a very hectic Monday, and y'all sit right through that agenda, good gosh, I know we got a closed session, I believe. Since I didn't have anything to say, y'all was sitting right through the agenda.
Well, we will withhold further comments on that, Mr. Singleton, but we're glad you're with us, and we knew you had work obligations, so you're gonna be a little bit late, sure enough, so. Let's see, I've almost lost my account here, have I recognized you yet, Mr. Matthews, for council report?
No, sir, but just something I want to share, I just happened to be in the Walmart out here on 401 South, it was latter part of last week, and they got a new manager out there, and I was talking with her, and I found out they're going to be having a COVID-19 vaccine center set out there for vaccinations in about a week, it's gonna be outside in Tents, it's gonna be open for everybody, and so I don't know if we can reach out for more details, but that manager out there is a lady, and she said they were quite excited about that, and it's gonna run multiple days, so that'll be in the Garner city limits, and again, it'll be open for everybody, so if I find any more details, I'll pass that on, but just keep that on the back burner there, and if we can find out more, reach out, that would be a good idea.
Uh, Mr. Matthews?
Just, I'm sure Mr. Mercer can assist us with that, as we give him some of the specific information regarding dates and times and those kinds of things, for sure. So, okay.
Yeah.
Let's see, Mr. Dellinger, have I, I don't think I've called on you yet for council reports, have I?
I think Mr. Dickerson had a comment before I give my report.
Oh, I was just gonna just clarify, I know what Mr. Matthews is saying, but they may have to adhere to the groups that have been specified for vaccination, so they'll probably need to look at the information when it comes out, as far as. One, two, three.
Okay. Now, Mr. Dellinger?
Yeah, just two things, one, a question about Cloverdale, I've been understanding that the developer had another community meeting a few weeks ago, and I sort of two questions, one, to make sure Raleigh is still sort of completely aware of our unanimous position at this point not to open those roads, and two, has there been any further conversation with Raleigh or the developer on the proposed rezoning or the development with regards to the two roads in Cloverdale that we previously spoke about? And has there been any comments from the, any residents in Cloverdale to the town about any discussions about that development?
Do you want to take that, Mr. Manager, I know you and I had been involved in the road out there, and we did talk to some residents, I have not heard from anybody who recently, of course, I believe at that time, you know, Raleigh said, well, they weren't at the point of, I guess, making some specific decisions, but everything seemed to be preliminary, but it's moved on beyond that now, and I don't know if JF and Planning has heard anything, or, Mr. Manager, I'll let you elaborate if you have any further information to share.
We got some recent correspondence from the residents that said they, I guess they received letters saying that the developer was looking back into getting it rezoned and those type of things, and, you know, they reiterated their concerns, and Mr. Treesenberg had previously sent a letter to Raleigh, and so I'll let him talk about any conversations he's had.
Mr. Treesenberg sent me an email last week because I asked some questions, and he can address that, I'll send this link to everyone, but he sent some information back from Raleigh, where it says the case is scheduled to be on the consent agenda at the planning commission's next meeting on March 9th. It will be reviewed and discussed at letter date, notification letters will be sent, and zoning signs posted ahead of that date, still to be determined, and there's a link where you can track the case, this is from a senior planner in Raleigh, so I'll forward that, and I'll go.
Okay, thank you, great. Anything else you care to add, Mr. Treesberg?
No, I mean, that's the, that's the best, the best update is just to review what's in there, and then you can keep track of the case as it goes forward. And just to remember, right now, it's just a text amendment, so there is no, you know, there is no site plan or anything yet at this point in the process for them.
So has there been any more correspondence with the City of Raleigh on those roads, since they have been put on notice what our position is about opening them up?
Other than the letter and, you know, just sending them emails to make them aware of our position on it, it has Mr. Mansoff at City of Raleigh. He's the one who it was addressed to, I know that there's another division headed by Mr. Don Belk that is involved as well. He had asked some questions about it, I referred him to Mr. Mansoff, who's in a different division of the letter that I had sent, so I do know that there, that the letter we sent has made its rounds, and they are aware.
Is there any way we can make sure that letter gets included to the council for that agenda, for them to be completely aware of our position on that when they vote?
I can certainly inquire as to whether they can do that, again, it's going to plan, their planning commission first.
Or maybe to their planning commission meeting, I mean, I just think, I've had people reach out, and they're very concerned at what they heard, and so I was wanting to, you know, I don't, I want us to stay on top of that for them. So that's, I'll follow up with you on that and do that, so, thank you. Only other thing for, I have, Mr. Mayor, is I sort of took your spot on the Passage Home Board. I know multiple members of this council are familiar with Passage Home, I know Ms. Behringer did a fundraiser for our birthday, I saw that, I did not contribute, I contributed a different way, but I didn't see that.
Where was the money?
I sent mine earlier, that's part of being on the board. But I had mentioned at our last board meeting, I'd like for them either maybe on March 16th or maybe a 30th work session for the executive director, just to do a presentation for council on what they do, so that they can, we can all be more aware of what they're, where they are now, and let the public know kind of the activities they're engaged in. They have a lot of interest in expanding beyond Raleigh and working with municipalities, so I think it'd be good if they could, people got to know what they're all about. So I just put that out there, potential agenda item, if that's all right with council.
As you said, as mayor, yeah, I think it would certainly be worthwhile for us to hear from them, and if the if the work session is not so busy, that might could be a good time, we'll have to coordinate that, I've forgotten the gentleman's name, I should know it, the director over there, Mr. Dellinger?
Seth.
Yeah, 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 okay, sure enough, so, council, I'm supposing you would entertain a session, I shouldn't say a session, or a presentation by him to give us all a little more information about the mission and what they do, and and how expansive they are, I think for a while, they sort of focused their, most of their efforts in Raleigh, maybe even the southeast Raleigh area, but I think they're looking to expand beyond there, they were when I was on the board. Okay, was there anything else, Mr. Dellinger?
Just Ms. Behringer had something to say, I think.
No, I just, I would agree, I would love to have a presentation from Passage Home, we were never able to do that while I was on their board, but it's an amazing organization, and they, they work hard every day, and they make a difference.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay. We are down to our last item, and that is item in a closed session item, so unless there's anything else to come before the council in open session, I will entertain a motion that we move into closed session at this time on the two items, and I wrote down the site on the second one, if anybody needs that for the motion.
So, Mr. Mayor, then we move to closed section on the General Statute sections 143.31, 8.11, A6, and also the same numbers with A4.
Okay, motion properly made, second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Gibson, would you call the role of the council for the vote on going into closed session?
Certainly, Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
And Mayor Pro Tim Behringer?
Aye.
Okay, I declare the vote is unanimous, and council, would you like to take maybe a five-minute recess just before we take care of our closed session business?
Sounds good.
Okay, all right.
And, Mr. Mayor, we will do the real estate item first.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Manager, so, okay, I will declare that we are going into closed session with a brief five-minute recess, and then we'll take our business. Back forty in open session, and let me just announce for the public benefit, the council went into closed session to discuss real estate item, and the council gave some instruction to staff as relates to negotiation and the matters regarding the real estate. The council also heard one item as relates to a personnel manner, which was a sort of a minor notification, and no specific action there was received as information. And so with that, council... And so with that, uh, council, I don't have anything else on my agenda for open session, and unless some council member has something, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
So moved?
Seconded.
Okay, moved and properly seconded, uh, all in favor, uh, well, I guess, should we call the roll one more time, Ms. Jones?
I think Ms. Gibson is off, so I, if you want, I can call the roll for you.
Okay, do that if you, if you don't mind.
Thanks. Mayor Proton Behringer?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
He's muted.
He's pulling a Phil.
Mr. Dellinger?
Aye.
Mr. Singleton?
Aye.
And Mr. Vance?
Aye.
Okay, declare that is a unanimous vote. Thank you very much, Attorney Jones, we appreciate that, and I thank you all for your time, uh, and for your active participation this evening, and so I declare that, uh, this meeting of the March 1 council is officially adjourned. See you all at the next meeting, if not before. Actually, we'll have, don't forget, the special session, I believe it's on the 11th. Did I say that right, Mr. Dickson? So that's probably the next time we'll be formally together, so be safe, be well, and, uh, I'll see you in a few days.